The public hearing procedures are as follows. We will have the final order, the reading of the application, which includes all the details on the application. We will have a presentation by the applicant or his or her representative. Then we will have comments by individuals in favor of the application or in opposition. And I would like to address that portion of the procedure. Both individuals in favor of and in opposition to the application will be entitled to speak. The board will receive comments by individuals in favor of the application first. After comments by the individuals in favor of the application, the board will then receive comments from individuals in opposition to the application. All individuals who are speaking in favor or in opposition to the application will be limited to three minutes, which will be timed. The commissioners are is our time. When the three minutes have expired, your comments will then be concluded and no further comments will be received. All comments should be directed directly to the zoning application, which is to be considered by the board. No other topics may be discussed. Only the topic of the zoning application. The board of commissioners has asked that all speakers be respectful and direct their comments to the board. Those in attendance at this meeting are asked to be orderly and requested to withhold any applause. Please do not make any shouts, boos, or any audible comments either in favor of or in opposition to something that is being said. Also, now that we're seeing there's no signs that are up here. Under Georgia law, public meetings are required to be orderly. Disruptive attendance may be removed after request under permission. There will be no discourse when people are speaking in favor or in opposition to the zoning application in any of the board meetings. Any questions will be rhetorical in nature and will not be answered by any other commissioners. The commissioners are in attendance to listen to the public comments. Those speaking in favor of or in opposition to the application are requested to find their name, address, and have a review of the property under consideration. The commissioners will not pose any questions to the individual speaking in favor of or in opposition to the application. The application is set for the applicant either in the initial presentation or in any rebuttal that the applicant or his representative had to the conclusion of the public comment section. We would like to request that Harris County residents speaking in opposition to the application be allowed to speak first. And then any out-of-county residents will be heard after the county residents have been heard. I will now call the public hearing for our first application to attend. The first application is for a special concerning application by line of the Horizon Wireless. The location is in North West corner of Georgia Highway 18, Interstate 28. The station used because of wireless tower. It is on 87.14 acres. The area location is 038, Marshall 033, Landline 98, 99, and 107. Land District 3. The wireless tower is on immediate and A1 zoning, which is agricultural and forest. The current zoning is A1, which is agricultural and forest. The planning commission recommendation is approved. With the condition, the evidence being provided to verify that this tower applies with and means all federal and state departments. The staff recommendation is approved. Yes, they are a representative here from the office. And yes, I can give you some of the details.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you all hear me? Okay, good to go. Thank you so much for hearing me this evening. I represent Horizon Wireless. My name is Lesley Heaton. And what we are here tonight to confirm me? Heaton. Okay. That's good, okay. The last name is Heaton, K-H-A-T, as in town, I-N-G. The proposed communication facility to be located is on Highway 18 and it's on the west side of 185. It's been strategically chosen to enable Horizon Wireless to provide improved coverage to this immediate area of Harris County. As indicated on the propagation maps that the board gave me presented, this is going to provide improved coverage, greatly improve wireless service and in building level of service in this area between Whitesville and the Harris Tru County line. The town will address an existing area with little coverage in between our existing facilities that we have that are named Whitesville, which is 3.2 miles southwest of the proposed tower, and I-185, that's the name of the tower that we call, and it's 3.8 miles north of this proposed tower. The proposed antenna height where the Horizon Pen is replaced is 180 feet. That's the minimum height needed to provide the improved service coverage and for future growth needs in the area of moderately sloping terrain. It will also allow for co-location opportunities in the future to minimize the number of towers for other areas. The top of the tower will be five feet above the antenna set along the Horizon leaves. And then there will be a nine-foot and lightning rod. So the overall height of the tower will be 194 feet. It will be a monopole tower. So it is a straight-up concrete pole unlike some that you see which are lattice towers, some of them in a straight triangle shaved down. We've chosen this location because of the coverage area that it will provide as well as its setbacks as well as the zoning ordinance that you all have in this county. So we only request that you approve our tower. Is there anyone with any questions?
It looks like on the map.
Yes, sir.
That I have here that the coverage is mainly going to cover the interstate. Because I live about 3.9 miles from this tower. And on this map, it doesn't even look like it's going to get to my house. And so it doesn't look like it's going to get to parts of Hope and Church Road, Howland and Platter Grove Road. I'm not real sure how much of Hadley Road it might cover or even to Wright Road. But it looks to me like it's more with the interstate than coming down in that area. And we already have two towers there. It looks like y'all are trying to cover the area right between them. And I know it's going to affect some of the houses that are on the exit. But it doesn't look like it's going to come out much further than right around that exit, the interstate.
You are correct that we are trying to cover the hole, which you notice on the map, right now is red. The improved coverage, you see where it turns to green and yellow? That covers that hole in the middle. And it will help those that are traveling on Highway 18 as well as the west side of 185. And it will help the homes in this vicinity. But it is not going to cover every single property in a home. Now, you see this red spot here? That's not going to be covered right now by this tower. Because the tower is only used so far. So this is a future tower over here. So that's why there's still a red spot. But this is the greatest need that Horizon has determined to get this space in between the two towers.
So basically, that you want to take care of the people driving down Highway 18 and the interstate. And then any houses that are on the... And then hopefully in the future, you might come to this tower right here. Because if we look from this map where you set the hole was, if you looked over here, we go to your map where you're going to cover the hole. It really doesn't cover a whole lot except for right in there. So my concern is that we're just going to cover the interstate. I have some concerns with the tower being so close right there to the exit ramp. Is there any way, I know there's a large piece of property. Is there any way that that tower could be moved backwards or further or maybe across the road behind the Shell station that's never worked to begin? And you know, it doesn't, it's never opened.
Across the interstate, I can't speak to that just from the Shell station, but across the interstate was not the target area that the art engineer indicated with the greatest need of coverage. It is on that west side specifically of 185. And as far as to your question, you're pushing it back further on the property. That is not going to make a great progress, quite frankly, the way the tower will operate. So I don't believe that it's only going to serve people traveling on the highway. But I'm not in the jurisdiction yet, so I can't specifically tell you which homes, of course, it's going to cover.
I don't see how it wouldn't help if you moved it from the west side to the east side. You're only talking about moving it maybe a quarter of a mile. So you actually wouldn't affect much. But I do know where it's going to go. It's kind of going to be right in, you know, you've got people that live right there. They would voice opposition of it being kind of out there, side door, front door, whatever door you want to be. And so my concern is, I know we have to have a drop zone. And I'm not sure if the drop zone would be, I'd hate for the tower to fall and get somebody coming off that exit ramp. Or maybe fall coming in one of the easements or the driveways that are right there. I'm just concerned that it might be a little too close where y'all are trying to put it. Other than moving it back some, a little further back away from that triangle of the Highway 18 and the exit ramp. But I wouldn't want it to, you know, you hear about stuff all the time, falling, hitting people, tree limbs and stuff like that. That's just a concern that I have. And I understand what you're saying about trying to close in the gap. But if we're closing in the gap for people driving up and down the road and we're not closing in the gap for the people that live here, you know, to me, we kind of need to look at the people that live here first, too.
Yes, sir. And I would take a look at construction drawings, but being that we need the setbacks and the height of the tower is 190 feet, I would take a look at the measurement and see if it would fall from where this type of tower is now located right now. As a proposal, it would actually fall on somewhat traversing the highway.
Then I ask for comments now, and then you'll have a chance to move on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? In favor of the application? Yes, ma'am, if you could give us your name and address.
My name is Maureen Barnes. I live at 172 Whitesville County Road. Yes, I am in Platteville because I live right there across the road from it. It would definitely help all of us on Whitesville County Road and Happy Hill also, so I am in Platteville.
How far would you say to it right now? Your property is, we don't want to waste this time.
Uh, approximately. I can see the, I don't know, uh, whole of the mall, not that far.
Gar, G-A-R, G-A-R. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition to the application? Anyone else? Is there anything else, ma'am, that you would like to tell us? If you'd share with us in our next call, please. Close the door and ask for your answer.
Thank you. Then we have another thing I'd like to say is that Horizon, they very much like the approvals that they can provide better coverage. I believe there's a lot of Horizon customers here in this room as well as we're very concerned about emergency service. In that if you don't have coverage along the side of a two-in-from or your driveway, your home or your family, or to a reunion or to Calway Gardens, you need emergency service. She can help. Thank you.
I have a question to make. From your comments, is Horizon absolutely willing to this particular location? Or is it possible to be moved within that same general area?
This is where we would like to place the tower for the best coverage. However, we're always open for you. If you all have a concern, we would be open to hearing what that concern may be and what that emergency service.
I think certainly we need tower in a lot of locations around Canton. I'd love to see one. I just wondered if there's not another location that would work and might open it up to more people.
As I stated, I am not art engineer, so I really would not say specific engineering comments. However, I'm here representing those art engineers. And they have spent hours studying these maps. And they have chosen this particular location to cover what is missing in coverage right now for Horizon. So that's the strongest statement that I've made from the fact that they have thought through this very carefully about you're covering a very large area with the best that any power can cover. Thank you.
Hello, it's a question. I'm trying to motion.
I want to make the motion to deny based on the concerns that I have. And just know that I am a Horizon customer and I have a Verizon phone, so I'm all about it. So I understand about the service out there, because I deal with it every day. But my concern is what I stated about the moving, if the tower would move, are more coverage or better coverage based on everybody, not just right there at the exit and just on Highway 18 and just on the interstate. So I made the motion to deny based on my comments and concerns.
Is there a second?
Am I allowed to ask a question? No. I'm just going to table this as deny if you're...
I'd be okay with that so I could talk to your engineers and stuff. I'd be okay with that. I withdraw my motion and table this. Give me a date, I don't have a calendar. We'll say to the next meeting. I withdraw my motion to deny, and I'd like to table this so we could, I could get a better understanding of the engineering stuff. And I'll table it to the next county commissioner meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next public hearing procedures are assigned and how we will be doing the meeting. It's not a long day, it's zoning. We will have a public hearing ordered. We will have a presentation by the applicant. We will have comments if there is an order or in opposition. And I will read that once again as the procedure for those comments. Both individuals in favor of and in opposition to the application will be entitled to speak. The board will receive comments by individuals in favor of the application first. After comments by the individuals in favor of the application, the board will then receive comments from individuals in opposition to the application. All individuals who are speaking in favor or in opposition to the application will be limited to three minutes, which will be timed. When the three minutes have expired, your comments will be concluded and no further comments will be received. All comments should be directed directly to the zoning application, which is to be considered by the board. No other topics may be addressed. The board of commissioners has their all speakers been respectful and directed their comments to the board. Those in attendance at this meeting are requested to be orderly and requested to withhold any applause. Please do not make any shouts, boos, or any audible comments either in favor of or in opposition to something that is being said. Also, and I can see here I have received, there's a proposed item to be done. Under Georgia law, public hearings are required to be orderly. The commissioners are in attendance to listen to the public comments. Those speaking in favor of or in opposition to the application are requested to provide their name, address, and have a review of the property under consideration. The commissioners will not pose any questions to those individuals speaking in favor or in opposition to the application, except for the applicant, either in the initial presentation or in any rebuttal by the applicant and to the conclusion of the public comment section. We would request that the Harris County residents, speaking in opposition to the application, be allowed to speak first, and then any out-of-county residents will be heard after the county residents have been heard. After the comments have been letting, the applicant has a chance for rebuttal. And if there are questions from the board, we will close the public hearing and ask for action on the application. I hold this public hearing on a zoning application order. The applicant is Gray Rock Developer LLC, David B. Harrison. The location is around two tenths of a mile east of the intersection of Gray Rock Road and US Highway 27. The acreage should be resold, it's 27.87 acres. And it's mapped 037, Marshall 031, Landline 88, Land District 18. The current zoning is R1. Locality, residential, and single-family. The requested zoning, recent is PRD, planning residential developer. The present use of the property is available. The proposed use is residential only and commercial outports and green spaces. The planning commission recommendation is disapproved. The staff recommendation is approved. Mr. Harrison, if you would like to make any comments, we will watch out for him.
Any questions? What was the question, please?
I said you would, you would. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to hear you, okay?
Thank you.
Got you, okay. Good evening, my name is Dave Harrison. I am the managing partner for Gray Rock Development LLC. I'm also a resident of Harris County. I've lived in Cocoa Lakes since 2006. We are asking today for a resulting of 137 acres on the south side of Gray Rock Road, the south end of Harris County right next to Highway 27. It was denied by the planning commission, but it was approved by the staff for recommendation, recommended by the staff for approval. Our request today is for a PRD. That's a relatively unknown zoning application for the benefit of people who may not have been here last time. And we're very briefly highlighting that. The commissioners recently modified the PRD to reflect zoning application requires a minimum of 100 acres. It must be sewer, public sewer connectable. It requires a specific amount of commercial space to be mandated as part of the project. It requires buffering, a significant amount of buffering all around the property. And there's a mandatory set aside of a significant amount of green space for variety uses, being preserves, reserved areas, parks, playgrounds, community meeting areas, things like that. In exchange for all of these requirements, the developers given a significant amount of latitude for lot size to include all the way down to one core acre. Probably speaking, and these are my terms, not necessarily the commissioners, probably speaking, the PRD is designed to take advantage of unique land situations where commercial space, sewer availability, and residential community space can easily blend together into a cohesive project. And at the same time, be consistent with the comprehensive plan which is laid out by the county. I will regularly refer to the comprehensive plan throughout this presentation because it's an important document. It's a reference to the intended growth of the county as laid out by the commissioners and the planning staff. I have beside me a concept plan. It is a concept plan of a generalized idea how this project can and may go. It is a flexible program we put off and alter here in just a moment as well. This is in a section of Harris County where the boundary goes north-south and south-east-west. Highway 27, known as Veterans Parkway Columbus, Hamilton Road in Harris County, is just on the west side of the property. The north side is Gray Rock Road. The far east side is bounded by Church, Greater Light Baptist Church. And to the south, there are three large property owners with frontage onto Pierce Chapel Road. The quarry to the north of us is an active quarry. They aren't blasting on a regular basis, but I see trucks going in and out of it with some frequency. Our concept plan calls for 196 lots on this property. And I want to emphasize that this is going to take a fair bit of time. My projection is this is roughly a 10-year project for execution. Roughly 20 houses a year. It will be relatively slow incremental and be in addition to the county on an incremental basis over time. It provides for 48 acres of green space, 11 acres of commercial space, and is laid out in such a format that they can be interacting for both interior and exterior. to the personal purposes. You can just follow me and configure my map here in a second. Based on the feedback that came from the planning commission, um, they had specific concerns about the commercial layout. In fact, that was the reason that they recommended for denial. Not willing to discuss it apparently. As a result of that, I posed to myself and partners, how can we best configure this to maximize the effectiveness of the commercial layout? And thus, I presented this alternative concept. In the end, I believe the commissioners' vote is yes, the property is acceptable for PRD and it's up to the staff and the developer to come up with a concept that is acceptable meets all the terms and is appropriate for the, for the region. Thus, it's, in my view, how is possible commissioners would endorse the, the project to be zoned for PRD, perhaps with some suggestions on how they could lead one way or another for the staff to follow from there. That may be a separate discussion with staff out of the public forum. I don't know how the internal workings work at the moment. But this particular project, what we've done is we've taken the commercial space that was further down to the east and moved it up to the west, closer to Harris County, closer to the Harris County line and the Muskogee County frontage, which is just over here. The dark green and red you're seeing here is in Muskogee County. This is slated to be commercial, commercial development in the future. So, it is highly logical that Harris County property could easily blend in with a cohesive Muskogee County-Harris County commercial active zone. And thus, the layout here. Essentially, we've reconfigured pieces. It's still 196 lots, roughly. We've, we've still got the same amount of green space, we've got the same amount of commercial. I've simply reallocated it to make the commercial maximum effective. Our primary entrance, entrance is intended to be off of Veterans Parkway. This will be a highly landscaped boulevard that you would see in any high-quality commercial entrance going to a multi-use project. Intended as we speak right now, probably to have a, a center high level of trees going down it, which will mature over time and hopefully be a, um, very picturesque entrance that will go with it. There's a secondary entrance to the north going out to Gray Rock Road, which is required for good traffic circulation. That, any, any good land would have that. And that would also be a landscape that is perhaps not to the same scale as we have coming from the west off of Veterans Parkway. And also highlighting that there's a green buffer all along the boundary of Gray Rock Road. My vision and the intention of how we could do that is that somebody driving down Gray Rock Road would see a greenscape all along the boundary between the road and the interior of the project with one landscaped entrance in sign that they would go by and continue on their, on their travels. As opposed to, you'd have side-by-side driveways all the way down the length of the road if you just did it in a conventional design for the most cost-effective to do it. I'm going to talk about the cyclic pattern of Gray Rock Road more specifically a little later on. Um, it came out as a public comment here during the planning commission, some concerns about Gray Rock Road, tra- traffic and things like that. I'm leaving for the moment to simply say, traffic on Gray Rock Road is very, very light. We have documented evidence to support that. And our impact on Gray Rock Road will be relatively minor in the scheme of things. The project requires an HOA, Homeowners Association, management of the, uh, community and the green spaces for long-term, uh, stability. Articulate houses in today's dollars, 2019, would average, um, 250,000, 350,000, around the $300,000 mark being our median. I gave you a packet of information in front of you. I'm going to start referring to them as we go along. The first one there is labeled Exhibit A. Generally speaking, I'm going to go sequentially through that packet. I'm going to jump back and forth on occasion, but generally they go sequentially as I go through my presentation here. Exhibit A is the current inter-operating agreement between the Columbus Water Works and Harris County for, uh, receiving sewer from the Grove at 315 and 185. This is an operating agreement that's in place today and it's valid. And, uh, for sewer to be effective in this location simply requires a simple amendment between Harris County and Columbus Water Works. Some preliminary meetings have already been conducted to confirm that. Both parties are agreeable at the Water Works level and would simply need ratification by the commissioners along with that. To that point, down here at the low southwest corner of the property is ideally suited for the placement of what's called a sewer lift station. We have gravity flow all the way down to this corner. Sewer lift station would consolidate periodically. It would lift it about 50 feet, put it over into the next drainage where it runs gravity from there on in the Columbus Water Works sewer system for treatment, uh, down, downstream. And in simplest form, our project today for 137 acres is simply an extremely small subset of the Grand Daddy, which is on 315 and 185, the Grove, which calls for 1,100 acres and 2,000, 200 housing units, which is imminent and certain relatively soon. I want to emphasize, our project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the document you laid out for growth in Harris County in this area. And I will talk about that more consistently as we go along. Additionally, our project is, is economically stable and a positive a- asset to Harris County in terms of taxes, both at the county general level and the school level as well. I'll highlight that in just a moment. Bring your attention now to Exhibits B and C in your packet. Talking specifically about those expenses. I'm going to start with Exhibit B. This is talking about the Harris County budget. Broadly speaking, right now, in the great center of it, the Harris County median tax level right now is documented at $200,000, $200. And these does calculated by the Georgia Power Economic Assistance Group. Uh, it's actually a little below par from what you're actually getting in terms of meeting your budget. Um, a product, a, a, a house product around 291,000 gets to a breakeven point according to the Georgia Power analysis. Going to Exhibit C, this is talking specifically about schools. And again, in the center, you have 200,000, $200. And for the school district, it leaves by this calculation as it's, it's short by $1,400 per, per household. Highlighting just to the right of that, where it says 100%, the breakeven point for residential, 100% residential calculation, no other contribution, is $285,000. So if we're successful in producing a product in and around 300,000, we're more than carrying our weight, weight in terms of tax burden and school burden. If you go next column over at 75%, it's starting to highlight there, any contributions for commercial is pulling that number down for a reasonable breakeven. So, the premise I'm laying out here is that tax-wise, um, economic-wise, in terms of supporting the county, burden on the county, school districts and things like that, we are more than consistent with meeting that goal and probably adding to its significance. To summation point here, the current county average on the tax base is $200,000, $200. And we're bringing a product, a product that's targeted around 300,000 consistently. We've got to be talking to county budget. We've got to, it's impossible. It just has to be that, with no other explanation otherwise. And finally, I tried to make an effort on all rezoning activities I've done over the years to reach out to the neighbors, talk to them firsthand and make sure they're aware of what we're doing so that misinformation doesn't get out along the way. I was successful at that at the micro level. I was not successful at, 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 at the macro level. My apologies for that. On the, on Gray Rock Road, I went all the way down the length of that road, a total of 1.4 miles from our entrance and made an effort to reach out to everybody I could. In doing that, I found there are three vacant or abandoned houses along there, plus old houses. Uh, there are two gates that were locked at the three, three different times I went out. I chose not to. But I liked those gates. Um, and I met individually with eight different homeowners, husband, wife, in many cases, or sometimes just one individual from the house owner. Of those eight, five of them specifically said they were for the project and willing to gain, be their endorsement to the project, which you'll see in your packet as C2, C dash 2. Slightly off topic now, Chairman, but I think I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the property. If you look at Exhibit D, related to the property, the general complaints are that the property doesn't carry its weight in terms of school level taxes. I'm going to highlight that here in just a second. Impact on schools applies every rezoning to, to a degree. Traffic concerns, property value impacts, and law enforcement availability has propped up, propped up in the last week or so, apparently as a topic that this property is supposedly impacting. Well, first, I like taxes. The key premise of this statement is that small lots don't carry their share of tax burden. If you take the extreme version of that, what happens if somebody builds a billion-dollar house on a small lot? Certainly it, it carries a load. I'm being honest with you here, targeting $300,000 as our intended median, and I truly believe that's what will get built in this project on a consistent basis in $20,000. I'll also bring you to, uh, suggest a particular exhibit E along with the E and D which I previously referred to. Exhibit E is a very interesting document from your comprehensive plan. It talks about the various housing valuations for the county, the local areas around it, and the state of Georgia. I highlighted the bottom down there with Harris County having $200,000, $200 as its median tax level. You are a good 30% higher than the median for the state of Georgia. That's good. That means you're getting more money per household than the average across the state of Georgia. It's bad in that your workforce has to sustain a fairly high level just to be able to work here. In terms of recruiting industry, that's an object for consideration down the road. Doesn't particularly affect this particular discussion. I'll highlight you, you, uh, Exhibit F, which is next to the catchment line. This is another analysis by Georgia Power's Economic Department illustrating the impact of this particular project. If you fold it out from left to right, it highlights a 20-year horizon of this particular project in terms of the economics of Harris County. And about two-thirds down the columns there, it highlights the net benefit fa- benefits to Harris County. And in every year of construction, per year, this project would generate $50,000 to $70,000 of net positive cash flow income for Harris County while construction is ongoing. That's a combination of your share of sales tax, your share of, uh, property taxes along with that. And there's some other, uh, figures that go in there that the disclaimer is are noted at the bottom. And then once the project is built out, here it's highlighted at after the 10th year, the sustained positive income for the county is $29,000 per year. Further illustrating that this project more than carries its weight within the county and deep bones off a lot of the premise that small lots can't carry their load. The reality is just the opposite. As these numbers would illustrate, it's generally believed throughout the development community and those who really look at the numbers, the real- reality is that more growth makes for more services available and more effective, more cost-effective in the process. You're amortizing your fixed expenses. It can't be more simple than that. Let me turn to schools. The quality of schools and the proper size of the schools to the community's needs is always a concern and I'm sure it's a significant challenge given various year-to-year ebbs and flows of different ways. I have been working in Harris County now for 25 years personally as a builder. Going all the way back to when you can build on a half-acre lot in Harris County on 7th and 10th. I've heard school overcrowding every year I've ever been in business for 25 years. Overcrowding, overcrowding, overcrowding. I didn't really understand that until I had a specific conversation with Dr. Feeny the other day, following up from the planning commission meeting. I didn't understand, and I probably, I suspect a layperson does not understand, that if you're using state money, you're obligated to set your facilities on a running average, a trailing running average, five years back. Which means you're always a step behind. You can't ever get ahead. The only way that's ever going to get fixed is if this county as a whole gets aggressive about a special school bond so they can plan, organize, get their, uh, properties together and be prepared to respond in a more nimble, more effective way. I don't know if that would completely solve it, but it will certainly knock the problem down in a smaller manner. I say all that because it's bluntly unfair to hold up schools, schools, schools against any project. When you, you can't ever win. And so anybody comes up here and challenges this project because we got to protect the school crowd, we got to protect the schools in general. And at the same time, does not hold their hand up and pledge, I am prepared to fight for schools, to fight for funding, to do it properly on a regular basis. You're just not being honest. I remind you, tax-wise, this property more than carries its weight for schools. Turning to traffic. With growth, you're going to have traffic. We live in an honorable, field-driven society. It's a reality. Using your, your, uh, comprehensive data, uh, comprehensive, uh, planning data, in 2000, Harris County had roughly 24,000 people. In 2018, the number's about 35,000. Got to be more cars there. 2030, projected to be approaching 41,000. There's got to be more cars there. Lots, large or small, traffic will change. It's part of the growth. It's a reality. The key is not to overwhelm our traffic and the network capabilities. I turn your attention to Exhibit G, which is in your packet. Following, uh, some concerns about Gray Rock Road from the planning commission meeting, I asked Harrison to conduct a, a quick traffic analysis of Gray Rock Road to verify what I believe to be accurate in my head, that traffic was not official on Gray Rock Road. You can read the disclaimer that's in there, but I've highlighted the key items in the analysis down below. The road at Level D can handle roughly 11,000 cars a day. Now, that's going to be a lot of traffic. It's clearly not there today because currently it's running at 1,100 cars per day, rough numbers. It's running at less than 10% of its design capability. I'll also highlight to you, Veterans Parkway, just to the west of here, is slated for wiping in the next few years, three years is what I remember from the planning meeting. And I highlighted to them in that discussion. They let them know that this property was slated for consideration for development and that they should be taking a look at traffic interactions at both the proposed entrance we would be doing and for the, the current, uh, intersection and how that may impact their analysis. I'm sure the DOT can figure out how to design that correctly for, for everybody's benefit. The punctuation of the analysis is that if 50% of the traffic goes to Gray Rock Road from this project at full build-out, the total traffic on Gray Rock Road is still only 2,000 cars a day. Roughly 20% of the capacity of the road. Under all circumstances, Gray Rock Road is not an impediment to this discussion. The first mantra I heard about the Facebook stuff was it would lower property taxes, it's going to kill the community, it's going to pull the community The first mantra I heard about the Facebook stuff was, "It would lower property taxes, it's gonna kill the community, it's gonna pull property tax debt, everyone's gonna lose their shirt." I'm gonna direct you to exhibit H, which just conveniently showed up this weekend. Exhibit H is an article from the Wall Street Journal on Saturday, talking about the modern era of social communications. And it goes to the premise, if you say something loud enough long, a benefit that people believe is true. Just because you say property values are gonna be impacted, doesn't mean it's true. The study there very clearly highlights that. The reality is, if smaller lots led to lower property values on previous property owners, not a single project would ever be approved in the entire United States. Because if it was proven to be a consistent pattern, it gets shut down, it never happened. The reality is, it's just not true. Just the opposite is the reality. New construction is a reflection of increased area demand and increased property values which follow that demand. Anybody who says otherwise is approved. And then just this week, the mail-out highlighted concerns about law enforcement response rates. That wasn't new to me. I hadn't heard that one before. I called Sheriff Golly personally this morning to make sure that my information is generally correct, and I am paraphrasing, I'm using my words, I'm not using Sheriff Golly's. Okay? But the reality is, that's a very hollow argument, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I would just call it fiction. The county geographic dimensions is the same as it's been for years, 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 years. The physical time it takes to get from point A to point B thus is pretty much the same. If anything, the roads are better, the cars are better. The staffing is funded through property taxes or the general load as a result, which are roughly proportionate to the household numbers in Harris County. So the officer per residence number has been relatively the same over time. Thus, response times should be relatively the same over time as well. Thus, a development on Gray Rock Road or a development anywhere else shouldn't make a whole lot of difference. Coming around the corner, wrap it up. The key to zoning decisions as a general rule rise in the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan lays out where the county wants to go, how they think they're gonna get there. As described in this proposal before you, and the concept plan related to all these details, this project more than meets all the PRD requirements. If you desire as a county to maximize the effectiveness of the commercial districts, I propose an alternative that I think is a better idea, and I would suggest you embrace that if you wish, we'll discuss it if you want to. But in all cases, the fact remains that the property is well-suited for PRD zoning, which is, in the end, what this whole stuff is all about, to be fair enough, because it's reasonably suitable for PRD. Additionally, if you look on exhibits I and J in your packet, additionally, the comprehensive plan map targets this area as residential zoning rural, and it specifically calls out PRD as a preferred zoning for this property in the future. Prefer, that's not, that's not wishy-washy about it. That's the preferred zone. To be more specific, if you wanna turn to exhibit K, to be more specific, the comprehensive plan lays out nine visions of the county with supporting goals and policies. Four of these statements are general in nature, being improved transportation system, historic planning, inter-county planning, and broadband enhancement. Nine of these visions specifically address residential business planning. Our project positively supports all five of these statements. And if you include AT&amp;T Fiber Optic, which supports most projects that have a degree of density such as this, we cover six of the nine vision statements that you, the commissioners, have laid out in your comprehensive plan. I'm gonna highlight only two of those. First, vision statement number one, and I'm paraphrasing, you can read the exact sentence for yourself. I'm paraphrasing, quote, "maximize the growth in the southern one-third of the county," unquote. Maximize the growth in the southern one-third of the county. Not a whole lot of wishy-washy there. And in fact, Harris County Commissioners first embraced that ideology in 2007 with adoption of the Grove, which is planned for 1,100 acres and 2,200 units, and it's about to get started, finally. I highlight exhibit L to you, which is related to that project. There's a significant amount of confusion, but that article specifically says Harris County's gonna spend a bunch of money to help the Grove be built. I've talked to three different people this evening, tried to pin down some details of that. I'm not sure already whether they will tell us. So, for those who are here in opposition today, thinking that this property here is the testicle that's gonna change the direction of the county for the rest of history, you're 12 years late. The benefit is yet to happen in the Grove, but it's coming. There are 200 apartments that tend to be started in February. I know that for a fact. There are 100 houses that are slated for construction in the Grove real soon. A reminder, our Gray Rock project will not cost the county a cent. The developer builds the roads, the developer builds the sewer station, the developer puts the lights in, the power, all the other supporting items that go there, and then we hand it over to the county for long-term support. And then it's self-funded, as we highlighted from there. The second vision statement I'd like to highlight, the vision statement number three. Again, I'm paraphrasing, quote, "encourage efficient use of existing infrastructure." In this case, I'm specifically highlighting two things. One, the sewer availability is available with Columbus Water Works. It's 15-foot in elevation, just over the ridge. That's a pretty good infrastructure to connect to. There's non-doing dock to support that, both government jurisdictions support it and are comfortable with it. And the road network of Highway 27, both Veterans Parkway handles the road detonates and Gray Rock Road. Our sewer-supported project is also, as a result, economical and environmentally friendly. A reminder, the original reason for two-acre lots in Harris County was because of concerns about inadequate septic tank performance. They were having a lot of problems with septic tanks that weren't functioning properly, and general consensus is that they need more area in order for them to work correctly. Sewer completely eliminates that consideration. So summarizing, our proposal is consistent with the PRD zoning requirements. Our plan is consistent and is a preferred zoning in the current comprehensive plan, which calls for rural, residential, south of Gray Rock Road. Finally, the Harris County Planning Department has recommended approval of this project based upon your own comprehensive plan. In essence, the legislative decisions for density and lot size have already been concluded by the Harris County Commissioners through your adoption of the PRD zoning as an option and the comprehensive plan. Today, we are simply asking you to acknowledge the correct zoning for this property. It won't be popular in this forum, but that doesn't mean it's still not the correct answer. I ask for your vote of recommendation for approving this property for zoning to PRD, and I'll be glad to take any questions you have.
Okay, can I continue, Harrison? Are there any questions? Newsters? There are two microphones down front we can use for your comments. Are there any comments in favor of this application? In favor of the application? Is there any control of the same name, so that I can give you your address and that part of the property?
I guess mine is Bill Clayton, and it would be Monley. It's a property in the 10th and 11th. Clayton, Seattle, Ohio.
Okay, so you have three views.
Well, um... So, I personally, where that subdivision would be located right now, I'm not really all that great looking at a specific area or corner. I thought that the idea of landscape interest as well as the footprint, they actually be a positive aspect. As far as traffic, I would think most of the traffic would be heading between that location and into Columbus using the larger travel areas that are already there, namely Veterans Parkway. So, I don't know where I sound dubious, but... I do want to be concerned with the traffic aspect, the taxes part of it. I thought it was interesting because I got a notice that our taxes are low enough. And if there's more households that we can use to spread the burden, then I would, I would think that would help, would it? As far as the values concern, I don't... There's a certain aspect of building a lot is building a lot. And if you find a lot that's two acres that you can put a house on, and then down the street you find another lot that's three acres that you can only put one house on, the three-acre lot usually not costs 50% more. If you find another one that's four acres, that four-acre lot usually doesn't cost twice as much as the two-acre lot. So I don't know if that necessarily does affect negatively for values. The ability to build a house on a given lot has a certain aspect of value associated with it. So I'm not really perfect in word about the lot size. We have plenty of other subdivisions already that have small lots. And those have curriculums, they can somehow imagine, you guys have to remember, help the bottom line tax bases.
Yeah, like 30 seconds.
Okay, so, that's not too, really, obviously. I don't believe, I don't, I don't see where it interferes with traffic because of where it's at. And I would imagine having retail revenue action in the end of Harris County would be a welcome thing and possibly help spread the tax burden instead of all being on homeowners. Because that's a problem I had personally in Harris County, is there isn't a number here. So all the taxes that are required to support everything are on the home and not spread across the business.
Yes, our brother John's offering to your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone in this section that would like to speak in opposition at this section on there? Is there anyone in this section on there?
Good evening. My name is Neil Callahan. I also live in Keemont Lake, which is about 18 miles from the subdivision of the Littlebury Springs District. I'm here to speak because from Keemont, from the northern part of the county, this is not an issue that just affects the people of Gray Rock and that area. This is an area that affects most of Harris County. Because once we start having developments like this and the sewer system gets moved, it's very easy to move the system one step further and closer and closer into Harris County. Now, I do want to thank you very much for having the forum here. I know this is special. You wanna hear the people, and you wanna hear us talk, and I think we're here. And hopefully not everybody here is...
Sir, if you make the most of all...
Hopefully not everybody here is gonna speak, but to hear you heard, just like the 80% of people on... And I recognize that it's a non-binary referendum, but 80% of the people of Harris County spoke at the ballot box that we didn't want this kind of development. And Mr. Erickson spoke about the comprehensive plan. It's very important. I think you all did a fantastic job. If he ignores the beginning of the executive plan, the executive vision, where you said that you wanted to maintain the rural nature of Harris County. You also said, and it was very important, that you wanted to concentrate on the reasons why the people moved to Harris County to begin with. And the reason we moved to Harris County, and the reason that there's so many people here today, is because we don't want developments like this. We do want commercial development, and PRDs could be good for commercial development if they're done correctly. I'm sorry I wasn't here to speak when you were coming up with the PRD and the descriptions for it back in June. I thought that the ballot lots had been replaced, but there is no way to enforce the commercial development of this development and the commercial lots. Because once Mr. Erickson builds this neighborhood, and once he creates a homeowners association and turns it over to them, the commercial area can be anywhere he wants it to be. I don't believe there's any way you can enforce it. And the commercial does not have to be developed according to the ordinance until it's feasible. In other words, maybe have... At the planning commission meeting, Mr. Erickson was asked what kind of commercial lots he saw there. He couldn't give any direct answers. He couldn't give anything except for the location being directly across from the rock court. And I also think it's important on the green space, where he draws out that he's going to have a playground for the neighbors and for everyone else to use, is also adjacent to the lift station, which he's gonna create there, which is way over the name of the county, and there's gonna be lawsuits there. And so I'm asking, because I think my time is up. I never shut up until I'm told to shut up. My wife's a worshipper every time. But I do ask you to reject this until we can come up with the evidence.
We have asked a round of applause, and I ask you to honor that, please.
My name is Emily. I live at 543 Hattaway, Littlebury Road, Reddick, as Mike mentioned, District. It's one of the thoroughfares up here to High School as well as in Columbus, 185. I'm a host of this developer. I'm former military. I spoke at the planning commission meeting. Self-fulfilling, best case, and I know from a former new battling first-time homeowner to a renter, periphery of military towns used to turn into rental property. Rental property is maintained in the same way it would be as if somebody lived in and planted their roots.
Okay, so do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do.
I guess this...
I do. Keep it up. This will be four minutes of work. Property values won't be what you want. Value isn't max produced, it's protected. You can capitalize on what troops in Columbus are doing, but you don't need to mimic them. You need to benefit from the populations they're squeezing in, because folks want space, folks want green space. Two other round ideas fall. Harris County could be that, then your value's gonna go up. Speaking of Mr. Erickson, you mentioned 200 homes just over by me. That's about 400 extra cars, average home, two cars per. That's a lot of traffic. We didn't hear any analysis when that was built in plan. We did hear it on this one. Probably got it delayed. We think it would calculate what we're doing. Judging from this meeting, two others I've been to, including one that Anna spoke against the wealthy people, if these decisions are so difficult, if some prayers are more than others, then maybe we oughta put it on the ballot and let folks vote for it. Americans don't like paying for taxes in center district. I think that's why it hadn't been on the ballot at the moment.
Okay, so we're not...
Thanks for the opportunity for letting me speak. Thank you for leaving a sign, advertising this meeting.
Just a moment, please. And did you say how far would you...
Yes, on the Littlebury Road Road.
About how far?
Probably about six miles. Probably about six miles is the approach line. You know that, I'm your visitor. Signs come down, the advertising meetings like this, there's a problem with the head.
Sir, you are out of court.
And open up a civil lawsuit, and y'all need to start listening. It's all time.
We have asked that you honor the best for no applause. I have read the rules twice, if you can't honor those, the reactions may not be good. So, please, take your stand. Is there anyone else on this side?
Thank you, man. My name is Steve Melton, I live one through five, nine seven, toward the highway three fifteen. I'm approximately ten to eleven miles away from Columbus. Okay. Been here for over twenty-five years. As I stated at the other meeting, no, I'm not here in Harris County. I've lived all over the world, lived all over different countries, and all over the United States. My father was in the military, I was in the military, I protected the wagon. You slept that night, I protected the wagon. Developers sleep that night. When you stayed into my fellow military man to fly down, because this needs to be... Yes, I did, I'm saying something about what you said. What you said was, like, in history... The way I mean, the public, people do get upset. And people do, if you look back in the history, people just don't sit. And we just do not, let you down on hand, okay? Okay, no, I'm here to say something, yours is to listen to. You said that, and I'm trying to say something. I don't want him, I do want him to mend houses, I do not want him putting houses on top of houses. I don't think anyone really wants that. Look at the people, man, you and I have to look at the people. I understand what we want, thank you very much, thank you for listening. My name is Steve Melton.
Look, you can't expect us all to get up and talk. I think some people are speaking at this minute.
Now, Sheriff, can I say this to you and to the board commissioners? This is a public meeting, it is a meeting that can be attended by the members of the public to speak when you are allowed to speak before the county law. What we're trying to do tonight is to hear everybody, what we're trying to do is to hear everybody that's got something to say. I realize that this is a hot topic, but in order to be able to make it through the night, people are going to have to abide by the rules that you have asked them to abide by. Everybody's going to listen to them, board members are going to listen to them, I know you're going to do that, but the public is going to have to, have to do what you asked to do, otherwise, you're going to have to take some other action to control this meeting before it gets out of paint. Now, that the rules were that everybody had to have three minutes, you listen to the rules, you listen to them talk, and that you respect what they have to say, but likewise, they need to respect what you say and what your rules are. And I say that to you, for you, for, and for you to take any other action, to try to control what may be going on there.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve King, I'm in two forty-one Springville Drive in Orangeville, approximately ten miles from this developer. The impact on me and why I'm completely opposed to it is I chose to live here based on the large and spacious areas and the low taxes. We heard some kind of crazy math that we should raise our school bottom, and that wouldn't affect us. To pay for schools, but I don't know that the gentleman who spoke was talking about current schools or his adding to schools. Two hundred approximately students will have a big impact on the school district. We're already adding a high school, a middle school. The, I apologize, I was prepared, Steve, to move to... The pump station, if we talked about the fuel, the filter for the pool, that's not ten years old, so in ten years, we'll pay for that pump station. If I mean, growth is so good, why are our taxes lower than Columbus? They had a lot more people issued, paying next to nothing. And so, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is George Ferris, I live three one seven Gulf Trail, Northern Georgia. I move, George Ferris, with an F. I moved to this county to get away from Skokie. I moved to Harris County, so I don't have to live in Skokie County. I like the rural aspect of this county, I don't want to live in Skokie County. I vote, thank you.
My name is Sam Schuler, SCSRAR, the eighty-eight twelve, the presentation lane, tall, approximately six hundred miles from proposal or Google Maps. I encourage the commissioners who both know, there are lies, damn lies, statistics. We got some colloquial terms, the all shots information from a developer that's making a lot of money making houses that once he completes them, don't hold their value. So, if he's going to try to impose a moderate growth to the county per, in just, you know, four houses per acre, he's also got to look at how well that's worked federal government. When they put out projections. The county puts out projections, and then they find out that there's shortcomings. And this is just a game, it's a ruse. So, if you vote for this, you're going to vote for the potential of creek, mission creek. Because there's a hundred and seventy-five acre lot that's just north of this, between right by, uh, two minutes, thank you. That's right by Coco Lake, and it extends from twenty-seven to Fortson Road. That's a hundred and seventy-five acres. Well, do the math, if we're going to put four houses per acre, and you're only using a hundred and fifty acres of it, there's going to be a lot of people there. How is it going to work? It's not, it's just going to creep. If you open up this PRD, then that will open it up for a mission creek from Skokie County, in southern Harris County, north, and more from the sides. So, you have to put that into consideration. I don't begrudge these fairies to make money, but I also know that like some of the other speakers, I moved to Harris County because I wanted the rural part. I purchased an extra acre from my home lot so that nobody else could build next to me. Therefore, I want this to maintain the status quo and either a two acre or at least a one acre, one mile, thank you, one minute, so I got maybe eight seconds. So, I thank the commissioners for allowing us to come to this venue, but I also know that you have to make some important decisions. And the will of the people is expressed on the ballot, it's been expressed at the planning commission, and it's being expressed today. Now, I would encourage everybody to stand up and take their three minutes, because I'm not going to show that there are people on the record to show that they are in opposition of this proposal.
Thirty seconds.
Outstanding. We can show by people coming up and saying their name and where they live, then you will have actual number as opposed to approximation. You already have an idea that the majority of us are in opposition of this proposal. Fifteen seconds? Well, I encourage, I encourage everybody to come up, say their name, and give their opposition, and I thank the board for considering the...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jamie Spence, eighty-four, Maiden Drive, I live approximately one mile from where this is going to be. When I moved to Georgia in two thousand and five, one of the reasons I located in Harris County was the county then. I don't want to see the county deep like the Skokie. I looked at houses all over, from Skokie, Talbot, thought it was too far out. But Harris County fit what I wanted. And I lived in Coco Lake. I am against putting more houses of smaller pieces of land. I moved from the north down here, where you were on top of your neighbor. You could reach out your window and shake his hand. I don't want that in Harris County. I disagree, thanks, Father. I disagree with his numbers of Gray Rock Road. I traveled Gray Rock Road almost a day. I think I see a hundred, two hundred cars every time I'm on it. So, I don't know where you got those. But you can give statistics that you want to see that favor your position. Well, let's get some facts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Suction, I live at sixty, Subpar, I'm on half the proposal subdivision, I'll just call it, Florida, 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 South. I came across an article sent to me by email, it talked about a raw sewage spill in April in Savannah. And after reading that, I tracked down the man responsible, or responding to this, a man named Jim Lapley, he's head of that division. So, I called him to refer education about lift stations. He described what happens when one fails. First of all, he told me that the largens in Savannah get inspected every day, and the small ones get inspected every other day. That kind of surveillance because the potential hazards are high. So, when there's a spill, he dispatches his fleet of jet back trucks, four hundred thousand dollars apiece, and they come in, they scoop it all up if they can. But what he said was, most disappointing was, he knows that homeowners who have backed up sewage in their houses don't have any option.
Okay, so do you have any comments related to this reason?
This is all about. This is serious, the sewage issue is simply a little bit. We've been talking about, again, it's been arranged for the waters without sewage, that's what we're talking about. So, he described what's like to have the houses back up with sewage in the middle of the night, the homeowners have to abandon their homes and pull their, uh, gutted and refurbished. And I ask every commissioner to stretch their eyes and imagine you're one of those homeless homeowners that has to leave with nothing in the middle of the night because your house is no longer available because of the lift station failure. Who, retarded question, who's going to be responsible for it? Where are our jet back trucks? And, you know, I looked around this room tonight, and I see an auditorium full of people doing several lines. This is one time, they can't do several lines, they're relying on you to take care of their expenses. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Franklin Miller, two one three Fox Chase Trail, approximately six miles. This is democracy in action, hopefully. There's obviously more people who do not support this than those that do. You support a few, but many of those support this, and I'll support any action or recall those. A few in the world that support this and not the people. Mr. Erickson states at the planning vote, that this is all right and has been planned for, but the manner of running this later was less legal and it does not make it right. Please listen to me and do not, and the others that are here, and do not support this, thank you.
Excuse me, sir, I want to just, now, of course, let's have your name for the record. So, please, take your spot.
Franklin Miller. Franklin Miller, I'm the office for the, uh, family, thank you.
Hello, my name is Melinda Ball. I live on Brown Creek Road. I am several miles away from, four miles, I'm guessing. We live in this county because of my employees' experience. My husband and I are still living on the six acres of land, because we like to unpack in the right ways. My concern is garbage pickup, with birds, like having prisoners picked up, that's to put their houses in water, and not to put it in a line. If not, we're going to have to pay that to the government. Would have about the fact that I think, if I'm not mistaken, we actually also landed our garbage two kilometers, and paid for this, and paid some for our garbage. How much more are we going to have to pay for this, I'm doing that? How much more are we going to have to pay in taxes for everybody in here? Because, like you said, they get all these people. We already have a situation in our schools where we're going to be voting in the number, whether to raise sales tax, which most people go to the mothers and buy anyway, or are we going to raise property taxes? Are we going to raise the... I'm sorry, I can't see it.
I know, I'm trying to do the best I can do it.
I'm concerned with how it's going to affect everybody that currently lives in this county. The people who want to have a rule, because if people want to have a rule, they're not, I would want them in Skokie County, I never wanted to live there. I would want our county to do that. You know, I want to, I just don't want that. And I vote free, you know, I vote regularly for people I think are going to do what I want them to do. They're all representatives of what the county wants because we want you to win. So, you should be listening to the county, to the people in the county, to do what they ask you to do. Because you don't have those positions only because we ask you to listen to us and to do what we want you to do. That's all.
Yes, sir. One of this, uh, councilman...
Could you make just a quick comment?
I'm this councilman, and I live in, it's all about two miles from here, this is supposed to happen. And I'm not against the building of a world, but I think there's many ways to do that, and, first and foremost, besides, maybe, but, I think he said, in ten years from now finish, they expect to generate twenty-nine thousand dollars for the county, says five hundred and forty-eight dollars per household, ten years from now. I don't see that's going to impact us now, or even maybe now, ahead of, I think, some ways that we should not, maybe, easier, trying to hire a planner. That can come here and help plan our county. We are a couple between Atlanta and Columbus, we're in that, the people of the Applewood, so the last bit of beauty between Atlanta and Columbus, and people come here. So, we might be able to live this on...
Two minutes.
Commercial spaces that are empty and are...
Excuse me, I'm basically, if you can't make any comments about this, we see...
That was a fresh show. A hundred and fifty-eight dollars in your ten years from now, may not be enough for, I don't, either of us to approve this, I don't approve this, and also, uh, I forgot what it was that. He said that it wouldn't cost the county anything, but it will cost us for the next two, ten years, uh, traffic jams there, road construction, uh, people will have, go by, it's a work, it's a long score. You see now, it all bring about a hundred and ninety-four households, and about six hundred more people to the county that would spend their money, you know, spend their money, because it's on the south side. And they're not going to come up and generate any more income on the portion spaces on the mountain, or Ellers, Lloydland Hall, I just hope to see the financial benefits right now for Harris County.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm so excited, I feel that a bit. Sixty oh six, Talladega Road, I don't know for sure, oh, Talladega Road, sorry. I don't know for sure the mileage between this, uh, it's like three to nine. Between three and nine? Okay. I'm sorry. As a Harris County resident for over fifteen years, and I'm only young, but I've lived here a long time, and I've always loved the small-town feel and the views of the Harris County. Now, my concern with a development this large, I mean, it's not huge, but you know, is the crime rate, you know, I know we have crime in Harris County, and I'm also uneducated, but I feel that bringing more people into Harris County is going to create more crime, which is not great. My dad lives in the Scogee County, I also get news updates every day, but the Scogee County crime rate is way higher, shootings every day. I feel like bringing more people in is... The development and growth of Harris County with that many houses and that many people is really going to skyrocket with the crime rate. I mean, not by the math, but I feel like that is a decent concern to have, so that's it.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Shilay O'Leary Callaway, or Patrick Callaway, and I live at twenty-two ninety-five Highway one sixteen. And I want to thank you all for serving the county. I know it's not easy always, and I'm clearly about to run out tonight. People feel very passionate about this, so I think it's part of the work of a, how do we step back from these cluster PRD developments and find the legal way to do it where we don't bring litigation against the county, rather than whether or not we're going to approve this, I think that...
Do you have any comments?
Sure, absolutely. Okay, well, the gentleman's statistics on school costs, they weigh off, tax-wise, this would be a huge net loss. The size of the houses he's proposing, they already generate about twenty-five hundred dollars in tax revenue, lost ten thousand dollars per year per child. And maybe if you can average this, it might work, but these new developments, they have the unadvantage. They have more than one child, a household, maybe two. So we're talking about twenty thousand dollars per household in expenses to educate, train, and make. Then doesn't even, you know, begin to start on the larger additional expenses. The overhead of the county is starting to claim that this won't be net negative to the county is the cautious. And, you know, with the, we could talk all day, so I'll keep it short and straight. Thank you all for your service. There's no question that this is not for Harris County, so a problem to be run for commissioner. And I think we just got to figure out how we do it, and that's whether or not we do it tomorrow. Thank you.
J.K. Robbins, Agri Report, probably two miles from the local development. First of all, I think what's been overlooked a lot is the fact that pretty much everything that he said is targeted. You know, he's targeting a three-hundred thousand dollar house, I've seen some of his developments missing the target. The fact is, is that once you approve this, he's basically giving all this power to do whatever he wants, develop whatever size house he wants to, and to whatever respect, and as long as it meets the minimum codes, then that's what he's building there. And again, like somebody mentioned about Fort Mitchell, drop the Fort Mitchell. This is what you say.
Please, sir.
Man, I'm talking exactly about what we're here to talk about, and you interrupt Dr. Simpson, and it infuriates me that I'm not saying what I'm going to say.
They see her, and...
I'm helping her out, and I'm telling you, this is mine.